I'm going to call this meeting to order, it is now 6:30. We're going to do a pledge of allegiance with Congressman Larrinetta.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Constitution, to the stand of one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just for all.
Agenda item number three is citizens to be heard. At this time's comment, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience, from persons who have signed the speaker's card located on the table in the back of the training room of the service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins. Our written comments received by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting, on any agenda item or any subject matter, will be read at the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council and who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While still the public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace as prohibited by law shall be cause for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. At this time, we have no citizens to be heard. So, we're going to go to the consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent agenda and considered as a normal sequence on the agenda. Any council members wish to take any of the consent agenda items off? That will need a motion to approve consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I guess I didn't do. Do I need to do the quorum call? Do I need to do a quorum call? Okay. I'd like to right now take the time to say that we have quorum. We have a councilwoman, word one?
Here.
Word two, not here. Word three?
Here.
Word four, here. Mayor absent, so we do call as a quorum. We are now going to enter into a public hearing. It is 6:32. We now are going to a public hearing. Agenda item number sixteen, conduct a public hearing to consider a quest to rezone the property located at 914 Holly Road and 1521 State Highway 35 bypass, also known as McCombs part of lots 14 and 15, 1.730 acres, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, to B1 General Business District, currently zoned R1 first single-family dwelling district. Anyone would like to speak? Do we have Kerry? Okay. You can come to the podium. You can just state your name and address.
Is that me? Am I making that do that? Okay. My name's Brittany Wright. For 1521 State Highway 35, we have a business there. We built it when it was county. It has since become city and it's zoned residential, so we're just wanting to switch to be compliant. The lot next door is 914 Holly Road. We purchased that. It's also on the bypass. It's zoned residential. We're wanting to put metal buildings on it to expand our current business.
Anyone else would like to speak on the public hearing? The other item? I'm going to go into the public hearing. We've got a public hearing here that are required for the property located at 3629 Highway 35 South, also known as A160 James McKay survey being eight acres, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, to B1 General Business District, currently zoned R1 first single-family dwelling district. And are they coming? She's ready.
My name is Anna Walrasson. I own that property. It used to be SS RV, part by boat storages.
Right.
The little problem is, when we turn it on, it's... we won't. So, we're using the city secretary's microphone right here. But it's, I mean, we just have our concrete slabs there. It used to be SS RV and boat storage. We want to have it zoned back to business somehow along the way it got zoned residential. It was never residential up there. It's always been SS RV and boat storages. So, that's why we're here today to get it rezoned back to general business.
Anyone else would like to speak on the public hearing? Again, the number eighteen, we got the public hearing to consider a request for conditional use permit for the property located at 3629 Highway 35 South, also known as A160 James McKay survey being eight acres, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas. That's you again.
I'm Walrasson. We want to be able to utilize the concrete that we have up there. We want to do some more businesses up there. One of them is going to be doing the manufacturing of the maybe tiny homes or small wooden buildings up there, application manufacturing area.
Then we want to like to speak on the public hearing.
Then I call public hearing close at eight, or 6:36 PM. We're going to go to the regular agenda. Agenda item number nineteen, hear and deliberate on presentation on downtown information kiosk. That's going to be to you Vanessa?
I'm sorry?
The information kiosk, is that you tonight?
Sure. Ms. Day is going to do the presentation, but you guys, the last time I was here, you guys were asking to look at some property owners, and they filed a petition. There's nothing commercially for sale right now, so Jennifer helped me. She thought there might be one property owner that would sell, so she approached them and they were unwilling. So, we're back again to ask if we want to go to the gas station, gas company site that the city owns or where we want to go with this project. So, she has a little bit of a presentation. We do have, she has applied for a grant on behalf of it that includes some of the elements that, that we're looking to put there for art and seating and some things like that. So, we're, we're into year, I think we're hitting year three on this and now we're starting to run up against some deadlines. So, she has a little presentation. I don't think it's very long. No, it's not. But I have compelling reasons why we need to move forward. There you go. Okay. So, Jennifer Day, Number 2B's former executive director of Rockport Cultural Arts District. Okay. So, I'm going to talk about Main Street Visitor Center. The visitor center initiative enhances the experience our guests receive and have commonly received in other tourism destinations. We all know Fredericksburg, River Wall, French Quarter, they're all places that people want to go to to experience that feeling and for ours, it's the charm of our little coastal town. So, this is a grant that I submitted last June for, it was called Main Street Park at that time. It was submitted to the Texas Commission on the Arts and it was awarded $37,900. And this is a partnership grant that was submitted. It was the, the City of Rockport and Rockport Cultural Arts District. So, that's how it was submitted. Okay. I'm in a position now where I don't want to lose this grant. Again, there's timing issues, so let's just walk through real quick. This is what was submitted so you can have the visual, the Main Street Park. This is a eye level. This was when it was going to be on Main Street between Austin and Water, okay? But you can see it's all been designed. This is a very key chart here. It's got the art exhibit area, it's got the information kiosk, it's got the bathrooms, it's got plenty of shading, seating, that type of thing. Very important to have this type of amenity within the district. I'm going to zip through these real quick. They are the planters, the seating, just to give you a good visual, recent visual. So, these are the key pieces here. It provides visitor information, provides public bathrooms. I will tell you that is a decade, decades old problem if you don't already know that for the, for the area. We have had people say they will never come back again because there's no public bathrooms. I mean, that's critical. It attracts visitors and invites, adds green space, seating, shade. It generates revenue and sales tax, right? We all want that. Promotes the arts and exhibit display areas. It is an investment within the cultural district, within the city and the surrounding areas. It attracts artists, cultural enterprises, businesses, job development. It addresses a specific need of the district that has been around for decades, again. Enhances our tourism destination, enhances our cultural district value and fosters local cultural development. So, this is where we are today. It's Main Street Visitor Center. So, the recommendation is to build on the Main Street, the visitor center on the city-owned gas building property which fronts Main Street, Magnolia and Live Oak Streets. It supports district growth inward from Water and Austin Street. So, the reality is this, we need to be visionaries, just like we were visionaries with the parking lot. We need to be visionaries on what's going to happen here in the next couple of years with the Bass Land Development, with the government complex coming in place, with the limited existing property for sale. We're in a situation where we can't, we can't be on Austin Street, right? This is one block over and to the next point, the, the district borders Highway 35 to Market Street. If you go down Magnolia Street, there are only three private residences. You go down Live Oak, there's only one private residence. Everything else is either business or second home. So, again, that, that just emphasizes a reality that the district is, is more and more commercial and it will continue to move westward. So, it makes very much sense to have Main Street Visitor Center where we're proposing and then the lack of suitable property to purchase available and limited city funds to do that. Cultural district grant expires August 31st of this year. We either use it or lose it. Previous hot funds have been allocated in previous years and we have plenty of guidelines and supporting sources. They're listed there, they're visual here. Some of these go back to 2006 with the half associate vision for the Heritage District in downtown Rockport. A lot of good information here that we can use to guide us through this. This is a very important slide. One of the requirements to apply to the state of Texas to have a cultural district was we had to do a survey. This survey was taken in 2016 and the top three features requested were public bathrooms, benches and seating and shade amenities, all these things that are a part of this proposal. There are a lot of other, there's great information here. Even though it's that old, it still applies. I mean, we've heard this over and over again. I will say that RCAD has been very proactive for two summers for a total of seven months. We initiated funding, we got temporary bathrooms, air-conditioned bathrooms during the busy summer months. I personally opened and unlocked and locked them every day over 400 times in those seven months, myself personally. That was a lot of work that we did because we knew the need was there to have bathrooms and to support our visitors coming in. And I'm asking you to help us get real bathrooms downtown where we need them. This is a map. It's also the Heritage District overlay, which is a mirror image of the cultural district. We would love to add that amenity to our already overwhelming list of amenities in the cultural district which are listed here and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions?
Okay, thank you.
Is that grant, is the grant a match?
It is one for one.
Yes. And the grant can also be used for any matches that we might need to qualify for the hot ones for any of the elements. So, there's not a, there's not an issue there. Our information center is going to be more passive, so it will be available to have information when the chamber is closed, chambers eight to five. So, we will be looking to have information beyond that on, on what we're proposing there. We already own the property. We're not going to do anything with the renter. You know, we'll, we'll let them continue to rent if you guys agree to this. That layout is not going to transfer one for one. It's a little bit different size and a different shape. We'll have to do a redesign. Want to keep the elements, but then we also want to leave our renter until such time that they would like to leave and then, then we can consider doing something else with the existing building that we own. It is next door to a residence, so I would propose a tree buffer on that southern side of the property and, and I'm sorry.
That is a, a, a house that is a second home next to it.
It's a home rental?
Yes, it's a rental.
Little different. So, still might put a buffer, but good to know. It, it's just entirely up to you guys. I think we're, I think we're at a crossroads where we either need to make a decision to move forward or make a decision to go in a different direction. I think when the program was initially proposed, it was to basically put some kind of nice porticoes out on Austin Street and I guess it was my bright idea to do something a little bit nicer. If we're going to spend hot funds, let's make it, the restroom with the information kiosk, but if we're going to spend the hot funds and invest money, let's have something for our investment. I did talk to a handful of the downtown business owners. They did not have any issue with it being one block off. Of course, everybody would want it on the Main Street. Hopefully, it'll be, it'll be a beautiful project and convenience would be Austin. But like I said, it's just a handful that I talked to and there's just some excitement to see something moving down here, so. Not asking for action, just if, if y'all want me to move forward there, give me a, give me a yes or a head nod and I will and if you want me to cancel it, tell me.
Yeah, I think it's important for us to move forward with this and just like Jennifer said, we're going to see growth in that area, so we need to anticipate that growth and we can only grow in one direction in that side, so I think it's important for us to start looking at the long-term plan and if that's the place we can put it, we need to allocate that money appropriately to get it done.
Okay.
I follow exactly that, that we already own the property. The property downtown is not going to get any cheaper, especially with potential future development. And then is it the highest and best use for the city to buy something downtown to put an, an information kiosk when, you know, we take it off the tax rules?
On developable.
So, that's not.
Sales tax property. On property that could potentially generate sales tax, right?
Correct. Generate sales tax, property tax, that can be more beneficial to us. So, we already own this. The only thing I would say, you know, right now with the building, with the existing building now, our, our layout is going to be kind of.
So, I'm thinking the building and the spot behind it, we just leave that blank because I don't want kind of a hidden flag.
A flag.
Panhandle. I don't want a hidden panhandle behind the building and the other building. So, I'll keep everything kind of in the, in the general square. I'm sorry, I should have put a map in there, but there's one area that's a square and then we've got a panhandle. I don't want to put anything up here to kind of draw people into that area yet. I think that's something that we look for in future growth, but right now we kind of need to leave that as an open area, so it's nice and visible. Maybe just put some lighting through there.
I think we, we still call it Main Street because it's still on Main, but.
It's still on Main.
We just moved it one or two blocks west.
We call it Brad Brundrit.
No, 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 no.
Porticoes.
Well, that would probably be more appropriate.
Joking, joking.
No, I, I fully agree with it.
I, I think it's a yes, please move forward and let's get this done.
All right.
Hope it happens, let's hope it happens, so.
All right.
All right, we're going to go to regular agenda item number twenty. Deliberate and act on a first reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map as stipulated under Article 4.1 of the City of Rockport zoning ordinances, number 1027, by changing the zoning of land from R1 first single-family dwelling district for property located at 914 Holly Road and 1521 State Highway 35 bypass, also known as McCombs part of lots 14 and 15, 1.730 acres, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, to B1 General Business District repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability and providing an effective date. Ms. Kerry?
Good evening. Kerry Dietrich, community planner, assistant director of building and. So, P&amp;Z had their public hearing and voted unanimously to approve the rezone. Like she said, they were in the county when they built their business and they just need to get compliant, go to B1. Both lots are right on the bypass. We got, we did get some phone queries about what it was for, but we didn't get any objections either by phone or the cards mailed back, so.
Any questions from council?
I move to approve item twenty as presented.
I'll second.
Word one?
Aye.
Word two is not here. Word three?
Aye.
Word four, aye. Mayor is absent. It passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you might as well stay up there, Ms. Kerry.
I'm over.
Agenda item number twenty-one, deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map as stipulated under Article 4.1 of the City of Rockport zoning ordinance number 1027, by changing the zoning of land from R1 first single-family dwelling district for property located at 3629 Highway 35 South, also known as A160 James McKay survey being eight acres, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, to B1 General Business District repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Okay, so this property is on Highway 35 South. It's eight acres. Originally, it was Boat Barns and they did have a cut for an RV park, but it was, it was never developed. And I think that was probably there before they were annexed. So, and then once they're annexed, they were automatically R1. So, they're asking to go to B1 to do some commercial projects. They haven't decided what yet, but it's fronts Highway 35. We, I didn't get any calls or queries and nothing in the mail, no objections from the notices.
Boat Barns next to it, right?
Yeah.
Now, and then you got bar, bar restaurant?
On the other side.
Future land use, it's a commercial.
Right.
I'm seconding.
You're, you're seconding. Okay, I move to approve item twenty-one as presented.
I'll second.
Word one?
Aye.
Word two is absent. Word three?
Aye.
Word four, aye. Mayor is absent. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And we're going to go to agenda item number twenty-two. Deliberate and act on a first reading of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit for the purpose of a small manufacturing business which is building wood frame structures for resale on the property located at 3629 Highway 35 South, also known as A160 James McKay survey being eight acres, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, subject to compliance with the conditions stated within the ordinance as well as those stipulated in the City of Rockport quote of ordinances, repealing all ordinances and therewith, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Okay, so this is the same property and what it is, their son builds those small wooden storage buildings, kind of like Dirksen's, and he does gazebos and then, and sells them. And they, they don't stay on the property, they go away. And those, the concrete slabs that are left from when the Boat Barns, Harvey took the Boat Barns away are the perfect area to do that. But that's not included in a B1 zone, so he needs to get a cut to be able to do that. And the cut is specific to the small wooden structures, so they couldn't come back and, and start building big metal buildings and welding and all that stuff unless he came back and modified it.
Modified the cut.
Right.
Any questions from council tonight?
I move to approve item twenty-two as presented.
I second.
Word one?
Aye.
Captain, word three?
Aye.
Word four, aye. Mayor absent. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have agenda item number twenty-three. All right? She's walking. Okay, deliberate and act on second and final reading of an ordinance authorizing the closing, vacating and abandonment of 0.069 acre of land being a 20-foot wide alleyway lined between lots four through six and lots 12 through 14, block 108, manning addition, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, according to the plat recorded in volume one, page seven, plat records of Aransas County, Texas, providing for the terms and conditions of such vacation and abandonment, authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed for the 0.06 acre to be closed, vacated and abandoned and providing for an effective date. Who has this one?
First reading of ordinance that y'all had the first reading on at the last meeting. The city received a petition from Ocean Glory Homes to vacate a 20-foot alleyway, met all the requirements. This is, this would be the second and final reading and then the mayor would sign a quitclaim deed and it was appraised at zero dollars.
So, no changes since the last reading?
No changes in form or matter of content since the last meeting.
Council, any questions or a motion?
I move to approve item twenty-three as presented.
I second.
Okay. Word one?
Aye.
Word two absent. Word three?
Aye.
Word four, aye. Mayor absent. Motion passes. Regular agenda, item number twenty-four, deliberate and act on a first reading of an ordinance of the City of Rockport, Texas, amending ordinance number 1911 which adopted the 2023-2024 budget beginning October 1st, 2023 and ending September 30th, 2024, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict we're here with, providing for a publication, providing for an effective date.
Evening.
You're up.
Okay, thank you. This is, what we're doing here is we're going to be during first budget amendment for the 23-24 budget year, we're going to try to do at least four budget amendments. We're trying to do them on at least a quarterly basis moving forward because we are watching the budget. We're trying to watch these numbers closely. These three funds that are affected, I'll just walk us through. First one being the water wastewater fund and what this amendment is doing is, is accounting for the reduced revenues expected from the OCL customers, water and wastewater revenues, excuse me. Water revenues in the amount of 428,000 and wastewater revenues in the amount of 92,000. Those are going to be funded through, of course, with, probably funded with reserves. The other is to add about $5,000 for future legal costs associated with any PUC proceedings. We expect that hopefully those will be minimal. I do also want to let y'all know that the refunds for the OCL customers have already been, have already been made and so some customers, it netted on their account. We weren't sure how it was going to show up. Other customers are going to see a credit, but that has been done. The second fund that's affected is the aquatic fund, center fund. We are reducing revenues there from the town of Fulton. We received a letter informing us that there were no monies budgeted to, to participate in that and so we're reducing the revenues by almost $6,000, again, being paid out of reserves. The last is the general fund and with that, we had a, I believe it was a vehicle that ran into the park fence. We're still working with the insurance company. I'm trying to get reimbursed for that, but that seems doubtful at this time, so just to be conservative, we're adding that to the budget as well and to be paid for with reserves. And so with that, we ask, ask for the first reading to be approved, please.
Council question?
I just have one question. So, can we just have the amount that was refunded to the residents through the water bills?
I'm sorry about.
Do you have the amount that was refunded?
It was about 130,000.
130,000?
Yes.
Okay, and is there anything we're doing with Fulton and now that they're not participating with the pool, are we gonna?
So, we're, we're working on redoing all of our agreements with the county and Fulton. This will just be added to the stack that we look at. We need to talk about their continued willingness to participate and then what that looks like going forward. We'll renegotiate that whole thing.
The, the refund was just a credit on the accounts, right? We, we have mail-out checks or? No, sir. No, sir, credit on the, to the bill. Yes.
And those will show up on the February 15th bill?
If, whenever they, whenever INCODE went in and made the adjustment and reopened those packets, it did it automatically. So, some customers may see a credit like a fine balance going forward of the ones it may have netted during the month on their, on their bill. And, and if there was any questions, and there's been a few questions, but that the utility has been handling it. Jamie and her crew doing a good job getting those questions answered.
Okay.
Anything else?
I move to approve item twenty-four as presented.
I would second.
Word one?
Aye.
Word two absent. Word three?
Aye.
Word four, aye. Mayor absent. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we are going to go to agenda item number twenty-five. Deliver and act to approve reallocation of unspent bond funds from previously recommended projects to other bond compliant projects.
And council, we know that you guys allocated the unspent bond funds before I got here. You had a, a specific list of projects. As those are coming to fruition, some of them are requiring more funds than were allocated. So, these guys both have a plan to reallocate what's left within the bond covenants to get the prioritized projects done. There's a couple that fall off, a couple that will be spent out of other line items if necessary or have been already, but this gets us to even.
Gets us close to even. We'll have a little bit of savings here, but what we did, our staff has spent a tremendous amount of time in the last few weeks, actually in the, in the last few years, working on the unspent bond funds. And we had projects allocated, and as the the bids started to come in, they came in considerably higher than the funds that were allocated. So what we've been doing is we've been trying to spend old money, and trying to spend old money at today's prices is extremely difficult. And when we look at the first item up, we've got the the downtown water line. We had eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars allocated to replace the downtown water line. And what we've been able to do is we worked with the contractor that was building the Center for the Arts, and while they were doing that project, we worked with them and had our crews go down, and we took a significant amount of addresses off the old water line that was running down Austin Street. I believe there's only about three or four addresses that are still on the old line, and we have a plan to work internally to remove those addresses over a period of time. So we'd like to take that eight hundred and sixty-five thousand and allocate it to other projects. The next one is the what you just approved in your consent agenda. Item fifteen was the rehabilitation of the elevated water storage tank here at the service center. We were able to obtain some savings by using a buy board contract for a provider for tank services for this year, and we had three hundred and twenty thousand dollars allocated for that project, and the project came in at two hundred and seventy thousand. So we would like to take the savings of forty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and apply that to other projects. So that one is also a savings. A few months back, you approved a project for a forced main from Gagon to the wastewater treatment plant. This is a very important project. The contractor's already been given notice to proceed. The bid actually came back eighty-two thousand to eight hundred and forty dollars over what we had thought we would use out of the unspent bond funds. So we're asking to allocate that eighty-two thousand out of the savings that we've achieved from the other accounts. So that one is already approved and moving forward. The SCADA system, we're still working on a project, and we have spent to date about four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, or excuse me, I'm sorry. We've allocated three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for that project, and we have eighty-two thousand dollars that we still need, and we're going to still proceed and get that project done. Putting a SCADA system on our major lift stations is extremely important. It gives us daily readings, it gives us alerts when we have issues. We have a lot of issues when the electricity goes out, and we need to make sure that that we are notified in a timely manner to ensure that we can get folks out and do what we need to do if we need to go out and put generators on some of our lift stations or bring pumps out to pump the waste and everything. The longer we wait, the more chance that we have of a sanitary sewer overflow coming out of our lift station. So we'll be moving forward with that project. The next one is pretty simple. There's an old check valve at Rockport Country Club Number One. The price on that valve is fifty-two thousand dollars. We'd like to take that fifty-two thousand dollars, allocate it back to one of the more important projects. This is an easy project that can easily easily be done in an upcoming fiscal year out of maintenance funds, so that will be happening. The natural gas, the sales consultant, that that is going forward, we're still moving forward. In fact, he's here this week helping us get ready for an upcoming audit, so we have that going on. The bid project is the wastewater treatment plant, and that project came in significantly higher, and we're looking to allocate a million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand and twenty-seven dollars from the savings on the unspent bond funds towards the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. So as I stated, we went through and we looked at all of these things, and we allocated funds to ensure that they did meet the current bond covenances where the money was allocated and we're spending on them, spending the money on things that were covered by the bond covenances. Let's see. Down at the bottom, the trailer street pavement repairs, we were able to capture a contractor that was already working in town, and he made, you know, he came in with a very low bid because he was already mobilized, and we had a savings there of forty-six thousand, so that'd be allocated to other projects. The drainage master plan, we had two hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars allocated to completely redoing our drainage master plan. But as you all know, that we've been working with Aransas County and other entities within Aransas County to work on a countywide stormwater management plan. And what we're proposing to do is to take this two hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and allocate it to other projects on this list, and then work with Aransas County moving forward. And I I think it will be, there will be somewhat of a cost savings moving forward, working with Aransas County as we go through these projects and everything else. And we feel like the money would be better served to take care of some of our critical needs for our infrastructure. So that is the presentation from the public works side. This leaves us, like I said, a savings. Right now, we have thirty-one thousand, four hundred and three dollars left over after the reallocation of all the funds we've just talked about. And, you know, y'all have been telling us for the last two years to spend the unspent bond funds, you know? It was what we call found money that should have been spent several years ago on critical projects, and it's been sitting for a considerable amount of time, and staff's recommendation is to approve this reallocation so we can get moving forward on some of the critical projects and get the unspent bond funds off our books.
Council, anyone have questions for Mike?
I'm sorry, just for the record, we have that thirty-one thousand left over. We're going to kind of hold that as a contingency. Something is going to come in that we're going to need it for.
I was gonna.
So.
I was gonna ask if if you don't hold back anything. I don't want to continue to keep that on the books for the twenty-two years.
Yeah, when all of this is completed and signed off on, if there's still thirty-one thousand dollars left, I will ask Mike to find a project, but we're going to just keep a little a little powder dry over the course of the projects, if that's okay.
I think that's a.
Promise you, we've got projects in waiting.
I think that's a good idea to kind of a little bit held back since we don't so we don't have to go dip in the more reserve. Recover a project.
I'll let Jean talk to you about the Parks and Rec.
Safety, just give my.
Had a hip check. Not in the same magnitude, but still of importance. The Rookery Bond Funds were slated specifically for the Rookery, so the covenant makes it that we have spent those funds on the Rookery. We completed initially the chain link fence, I guess, when the property was bought, all the cedar fencing surrounded. We did the observation deck and the sidewalk. We had a little bit of money, we completed this past fall, we completed the HEB portion of the Rookery fencing, and that is through. We had a little bit of funding, and we had two thousand allocated to the Rookery signage. There's no signage there that says Bent Oaks Rookery, City Parks Department, or anything to people passing by, so we've got a little bit of balance. We can't do it for two thousand, but we're recommending that the balance of those funds be moved or redirected to the Rookery signage, and that's sixty-eight hundred for that. The community aquatic park had a parking lot overlay of fifty thousand that was budgeted for that and and remaining funds for the pool, for the community pool. Worked with one of Ryan's contractors. After we reviewed the parking lot, he had suggested that it was in good shape, that not to do the overlay, to just do the restriping. So we have a big problem, if you've ever been to the pool, it's kind of difficult when you pull in. It's not a true entrance, so we're redirecting twenty-four thousand of those overlay funds back to widening that entrance, which would make it a safer entrance. And then I've got some piping pump house needs that need to be spent inside that pump house as far as it just needs a lot of upgrades, so we're at eighty-five hundred reallocated for that for the community aquatic center. On the Memorial Park funds, we had the two big items were the fitness court shade structure and the basketball court shade structure. We went in and allocated, or the CIP funds were allocated at fifty thousand for the fitness court shade structure and fifty thousand for the basketball shade structure. We went over when the fitness court structure was done by thirty-four thousand. So when we went back to get the baseball court shade structure, the last bid I got was two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, so there's no way I can do the basketball court structure. It was cloudy today, those kids were okay playing basketball in the shade, and so being that, so and I'm not trying to be sarcastic, being that we did have, there are some other needs at the Memorial Park that we have. It's very hard on those people who are constant users of the fitness court now during daylight savings time, and they paid off work at other different hours and would like lighting. We can do the lighting and possibly the some of the skate park lighting, which I want to do the fitness court first and then see if I have a balance of funds for that, but I want to redirect forty-five thousand back to the fitness court lighting and twelve thousand, five hundred to Memorial Park signage. On the Memorial Park signage, we want to do a larger sign at Memorial Park than our smaller one, it's our crown jewel. We want a real similar to the service center. We want a sign similar to that, and we also want the digital display so that we can advertise park events and upcoming events at the park on that. So that's that's our plan for those redirection of funds that were allocated for Memorial.
Any questions, council?
Got none.
I guess my only thing is, there's a lot of numbers that you're, I mean, we, there's a lot of numbers, and I know we we read them and we're listening, we understand. If we can have a maybe a clearer picture that we can put on our website for people to understand where these are being spent and how we're going to spend them, that would be, you know, informational, because I know a lot of people follow the unspent bond funds that were found.
We can put, of course, these documents are in the packet as well, but we'll we'll help something.
We've got it very well laid out, spreadsheet, camera.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty self-explanatory, but just to have it out there for them to find it easily would be nice.
And that that also leaves us a little bit extra in your park.
And Memorial Park, yes, sir, and then just a small smidgen at the Rookery.
So probably, I mean, same same concept, just leave it there. Yeah.
Yeah, instead of trying to find, let's see where it really needs to go.
I move to approve item twenty-five as presented.
I'm second.
Word one.
Aye.
Word two absent, word three.
Aye.
Word four, aye, mayor absent. Motion passes. Regular agenda item number twenty-six. Deliverate and act on awarding contract to RP Constructors Incorporated for improvements to the City of Rockport wastewater treatment plant.
This is a biggie. This is another one that we've been working on for several years, and we've got lots of folks that have their fingers in this pie that helped us get this project to fruition. We actually have the the project engineer and another another representative from urban engineering here tonight, so if there's any questions, I'll call them up here to answer. But what we did is we went out for sealed bids for improvements to the wastewater treatment plant, and we conducted a bid opening with urban engineering on November the fifteenth. There were three bids submitted, and a copy of the bid tabulation is attached in your package for review. RP Constructors out of New Bronzeville was the low bidder with a base bid of five million nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, excuse me, five million, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And after reviewing the bids and the amount of money that we had allocated for the project, we asked our our project engineer to go back and look at things that could help us reduce the price and contact the low bidder to see if they'd be willing to lower their base bid. And what we removed is a third clarifier. We have redundancy for everything that's done at the wastewater treatment plant. We've got, you know, two of everything, most everything, I should say, but we don't have two of everything, but most of our critical infrastructure, there's two of them. We were looking to add a third clarifier, and that was just to take us into the future to help us in, you know, over a period of time with the the destructive atmosphere and the conditions out there, we seem to have a lot of issues with the clarifiers, and so we were asking to maybe add a third one so we would have another one in the mix so, you know, on the bench, so to speak, if we had another issue. And that was going to cost a million dollars. So we removed the third clarifier, and we currently have a non-potable water system that consists of, of course, pumps and pipings and the electrical to service the the pumps out there, and we were going to replace that and put in a new non-potable water system for a cost of three hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The engineer met with the low bidder, and they agreed to remove those two things from their bid, and their base bid was lowered to four million, five hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. And we talked to the engineer, we talked to the contractor. We feel like this is a good price for what we're going to get. The total cost for the project are four million, excuse me, yeah, four million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand and forty-eight dollars. The project is funded by the American Rescue Plan, so there are ARPA funds are two million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty cents. The ARPA funds cover two million, five, two million, five hundred thousand, five hundred and twenty-two and twenty cents for construction and one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for grant administration. We're working with Langford as our grant administrator. I know our grant administrator is is listening in tonight, she couldn't be here. We discussed things with her. She approved us moving forward with the reductions and everything. The remaining balance of two million, three hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty cents is being funded out of the unspent bond funds, and that is three hundred thousand, three hundred, three hundred, get my brains right, three hundred thousand, two hundred dollars for engineering services and four million, five hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars for construction cost. So what we're coming to you tonight is asking you to award a contract, and you've got a letter of recommendation from the project engineer, and they're here to answer any questions, to award a contract tonight for improvements to the wastewater treatment plant to RP Constructors Incorporated out of New Bronzeville in the amount of four million, five hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars as presented. And be glad to answer any questions about what we're doing. Like I said, this is something that we've been working on and it's been needed for several years. I know that a lot of you, when you first came on to the council, we did tours and we went out, and, you know, it it's an extremely corrosive atmosphere out there. Things things break down on a regular basis, you know, and this fiscal year, we've had some catastrophic breakdowns of some of our major components. And, you know, we've been lucky enough to scrounge up the funds to get things done. You know, we spent a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on a clarifier rake and different things. Our belt press went down, you know, and these are all critical things, and our our plant operators out there have done a tremendous job of keeping the plant operating within TCUQ permit guidelines. And, you know, this this overhaul to the plant, it's a two-year project. It's not something that's going to happen overnight. It's going to be a construction project that will be very visible as you drive down twenty-one sixty-five for over two years. But when we're finished, I think we'll have a state-of-the-art facility. It will help us. One of the things that the city manager has charged me with is once we get this project complete, she wants solid numbers of what we look like for the future. She wants to know exactly what our capacity is and what we're able to do and what our reserves are for the future. And, you know, there are TCUQ guidelines for when you reach a certain percentage of the operating capacity of the plant, you have to start planning for either additions or a new plant. And we're not there yet. I hope we're not there for many, many years, but once we're finished with this project, we're going to do calculations and try to let our citizens and our city management team know exactly where we are with wastewater for the future. Be happy to entertain any questions.
So maybe for your mark, but right now, we have the change order number one, what we exacted one point three six. Can that be added back in? Should we seek funding for that?
If we can find funding.
Well, I mean, it's four hundred and sixty day project, it won't happen in a year.
You know, and and that's, like I said, this is a two-year project, so as we go along, you know, the. go along, you know, the, the pay applications and the other things that are coming in, you know, it's going to be a two-year process. And I think it'll take us through at least the next two fiscal years. So we have two more years of planning where we can look. And anything that we can do in the future, if we have a contractor that is already mobilized and onsite and working, then it reduces, you know, what, what they would bid on something that is being funded from a new fiscal year. So yes, absolutely, we can keep an eye on things and look to see what can be done if funds come available.
I, I understand the funding is, is tight, but we're...
Worst-case scenario, we, we scrounged up the money and we have to rebid it. Hopefully we wouldn't get there. We could add it back in as a alternate or change order, but that's worst case.
You know, while we have, while the, while the construction's going on, we have contracted there.
We would all love that very much.
And we started trying to seek funding for, or come up with a plan maybe in the next budget cycle for that. But I do think that third clarifier is probably needed, in the original plans for a reason. And I don't want to cut ourselves short just like...
And I, I don't want to call it fluff, but as I stated, you know, if you've got three and one goes down, you've still got two. If you've got two and one goes down, you've got one. And, you know, every time something happens, I mean, it, it's an immediate fix. When something happens out there, we can't wait. We can't say, well, you know, we've got to wait till next fiscal year and start looking for the other year. If we have a critical breakdown at the wastewater treatment plant, we have to jump immediately and start doing the repairs. And, you know, unfortunately, they're extremely expensive. And, you know, we've gotten by for many, many years with two. Engineer, Martin, would you like to add anything to that about, you know, what you think eliminating the third clarifier? Is that a critical thing, or?
It's all come down to money. Clarifiers were built in 86, so they're 20-something years old.
Don't do math in public.
Yeah. But they, they're showing their age, and part of the money still includes refurbishing some of the equipment to the two-year-old clarifier. It, it, a third clarifier does add some reliability. Is it a critical, it, it's kind of a roll of the dice, you know? If, if you had a catastrophic failure of a clarifier, then the third clarifier would be a benefit. But so far, we've been able to get by with repairs and stuff. So we're, we're doing something to almost every unit out there due to the age. The digestors were, it was built in the 50s. The thicker was built in the 60s, I think. The office, we're doing a new office. It was built in 72, I believe, and was in really need of a, you know, it really needed to be updated. So clarifier, I, I think of everything we're doing, it was a big dollar item to be able to reduce the amount to make it more acceptable. So, but, you know, I, I think we should still keep it on the list for the future to, to adequately clarify. But I, I think like I've said, we're, once we're getting into, we're going to look at, you know, kind of look at the future and see where we are as far as, you know, what we need to do to either start budgeting money or, or how long we'll be able, how long we'll be able to get by with what, you know, what we're doing now.
This is Mark Maroney. He's the project engineer from Urban Engineering, just to get it on the record.
I have another question. Move to approve item 26 as presented.
I will second.
Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two absent, ward three?
Aye.
Ward four aye, mayor absent, motion passes. So we're going to go to regular agenda item number 27, deliberate an act on ratification of contract with Tyler for $78,000. And I think that's yours, Vanessa?
Mayor and council, a former employee signed a contract with Tyler for $78,000, which that amount is not within employees' purview. And so it was unknown to us until maybe a week ago, when we started getting bills in that were due. The services provided in it are needed services. They are related to the Tyler conversion of our PD data. One of the things to do, and Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, is to transfer all of her old data into the new Tyler system so that the sheriff's office and the city can both work off of the same system instead of dispatch having to work off of two systems. And then the other portion of the contract was to provide additional seats in, within the software. Because when the initial purchase was made, there were only four seats purchased, and there's actually eight console seats in...
Seven, actually.
I'm sorry, seven. Console seats in communications. There is a case that we could probably get out of the contract. It would cost us money to get out of the contract. We've identified funds to pay for it if you wish to go forward. In code enforcement, we had allocated $150,000 for the demolition of one of the buildings on Market Street that, that we have been discussing. Being that that's tied up in the court, we think that we won't spend that money this year. It is a little bit of a kick the can, but I think it's the best alternative. It keeps funding in PD, I mean, code enforcement PD. We get something for the money rather than just spending our money trying to get out of a contract. And I can't say I can prevent a roach employee from doing something in the future, but...
We may, we may spend that in, in legal, yeah, in trying to fight a contract.
You know, it, we...
Tyler's not a small finish.
If we want to truly try to get out of it, it's like, I think Art told me, we'll, we'll start with sending them a letter. And, you know, if they say no, then we say, all right, never mind, or whatever. The, the one thing I will say is, if we want to get out of the contract, we will come back to you to buy the data transfer from seized funds, because that is a necessary element that was left out. To have those girls working on two different systems is not practical at all.
Is, is this, the extra seats, is it a need?
The what?
The extra seats that were in the contract?
Would you mind to speak to that? I'm very sorry.
No, that, that's perfectly fine. We have four primary 911 consoles with the 911 systems and the radio systems, but then we have three additional seats. There's many times, especially during big events, large events, that we use all seven seats. So one of them's in my office. And so, I mean, I, you know, we, we call take 24/7. And so holiday weekends, festival weekends, Fourth of July, hurricane, whatever the case may be, we, we manage, we wish we had 10 seats sometimes. And so, well, I'm just saying, well, we've got the backup here, sir. But we, we definitely use those, those, those seats. And the conversion, again, that was something that was left out, and all the data has to be converted. And we're talking about the master street address guide. And as a public safety responder, sir, you know how important that is. We have to have the, the, the full, you know, address guide for the county. So that's part of the conversion. And then, of course, all the data, as, as she, she pointed out, Ms. Warner pointed out, we have to have all the data, all the warrant data, all the person's arrest records, everything that our, all of our agencies do 24/7. And so we can't not, not have that data converted.
So in, does that 78, does that pay or pass, get us caught up in, or I guess pass in voices plus?
So yes, that will, that will bring us up to date. Now, I will mention that Captain Anderson is working with Tyler to get us some money refunded that we believe we are owed. But, you know, just because we believe, I mean, they're going to get it good. But he's, he's working on that, so hopefully we can spend less of that. But I would like to allocate the full amount in case something doesn't come through, you know? Then we would just be back to even.
I guess my question's just silly, but, so you have the 78,000, but you have 78,336. If we made a motion, do we need to change that?
I'm sorry?
On here, it says 78,336. On mine, it says 78,000.
Yeah.
Change the motion to read exactly.
The contract is correct, not the agenda. That's my fault. 78,336. I apologize.
336?
Yep.
And I just want to, so this has already been in place. You guys are using it. No, so it's...
No, not yet. It's, it's the migration to new software. And that plan has, has been in place for actually a couple of years. The county has been on the, it was out technologies for, I don't know how many years, Bobby, maybe that, probably eight or 10 years. The county's been on, on the system. But if we migrate over to this new system, the PDS, RMS system, and of course, all of our CAD and 911 records, we'll actually be on a, a more modern, updated version of Tyler Technologies. It's called in-code, called safety. And so again, converting the persons, the, the records, the jail stuff, the records, all the records managed between the, the police department and the county. So, so work in progress, but contracts were signed previously. And so we, you know, it's, again, it's been a work in progress for a couple of years.
Any other questions?
And we're ready to, we're, we're ready to move forward. I mean, there's just a couple of, of little heavy links now, converting our state computer, the Tlet system and all that will migrate. And all the mobile applications, that was another thing, too, that we might have had some things in, is that for the mobile application for our units and the patrol car to run mobile, to have access to that, those are, you know, additional seating as well.
Any other questions?
I move to approve item 27 with the amount of $78,336.
Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two is absent, ward three?
Aye.
Ward four aye, mayor absent, motion passes. Regular agenda item number 28, deliberate an act to grant park staff authorization to submit a response to Ransus County's request for proposals, FRP number 2023-1105 for the Tiger Field Athletic Complex lease.
The county recently put out an RFP for the management of Tiger Field Athletic Complex directly across the street from our Memorial Park. The condition of the facility and the maintenance of the grounds has been probably less than adequate, and that's been a big deterrence on the utilization. We think we're at a competi, competition within Memorial Park for open space just for flag football, soccer, getting clipped by the frisbee guys, the disc golf guys, which, I mean, it's amazing, there's people playing disc golf. Even today, we were out there and they're playing out. So we've got a lot of need for open space. We think we have the management, we think we're the only entity that has the management capability to bring those facilities back up. The concern is cost, right? What is the cost for this open space for the city? It is a competitive bid, so I'm not ready to tip what we would do, but we would stay within our budget that we previously have right now for our parks department and pick up the management and oversight of Tiger Field with this proposal. So we're just asking for your permission to submit that request. And I think it's very clear in our submitting documents, we were telling the county, we do not think this RFP is the proper vehicle to have this conversation. We think, and a couple of the county commissioners have voiced that a memorandum of agreement or some kind of agreement protecting the city's interest long-term would probably be a better vehicle. But that being said...
Not that the, not that the RFP isn't the appropriate document for them to put out. It's just not the appropriate response between the two governmental entities.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. We thought not responding would maybe not adequately show that we are interested. So we do, we want to respond, we're just saying, there's, there's an easier way to skin the cat.
Any questions?
I move to approve item 28 as presented.
And I'll second.
Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two absent, ward three?
Aye.
Ward four aye, mayor absent, motion passes. All right, so we're going to go to agenda item number 29, reports from council. Mrs. Ringo.
I recently attended the EDC summit. A lot of beneficial information was provided. I had the opportunity to speak on one of the panels regarding healthcare. I looked forward to moving forward with a lot of ideas and plans that we've kind of started developing as far as healthcare, I resource the amenities in the area. So kind of what I've been working on since attending that. Otherwise, not much going on in the ward. It's been pretty quiet.
Two?
Three.
Three, sorry.
I also attended the EDC summit, and I believe that Ward one representative did an outstanding job representing her entity that she was speaking for, even though she didn't like public speaking. I think she did great, as well as city manager did great representing the city and getting some of our needs out there. Things we heard were run the, run the gamut of what, of what everyone out there thinks we, we need to do in Rockport, Ransus County. But it was a lot of great ideas and wealth of knowledge presented to us. Sports tourism is probably the, hit the hardest, and, and affordable housing, attainable housing, I should say. But above those, I think everybody took away something from that, hopefully, took away something from that and, and would move forward with some things we learned. Other than that, nothing else going on.
I think EDC was the biggest thing to talk about. I did not attend, unfortunately. I'm glad you guys did, and thank you for going. I don't really have much going on in my ward, so that is it for tonight. So we're going to go into executive session. City council will hold an executive session pursuant to the provisions of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with authority contained in section 551.071, consultations with attorney seeking the advice of attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or assentment offer and on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Dismerring Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clear conflicts of this chapter. Number one, City Hall, and number two, Concho Street and General Land Office, GLO Drainage Project. And number 31, section 551-074, personnel matters, deliberate appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, city secretary. Your non-execution is 736. Your non-executive session is seven thirty-six.
Employee City Secretary, we are now in the reception, it is 7:36.
Okay. We're on, ready?
Yeah.
The session is now over at 8:06. Back into regular session.
I move to appoint, to appoint, interim city secretary, Kimberly.
Word one, aye. Word two, not here. Word three?
Aye.
Word four, aye. Motion passes.
Do you want, or motion adjourned?
Second. Okay, we're here now in adjourned at 8:06. Okay. 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 We're on, ready? Yeah. The session is now over at 8:06. Back into regular session.
I move to appoint, do any appointing. Interim city secretary is Kimberly. Effective February 1st.
I have a second. Word one, aye. Word two, not here. Word three?
Aye.
Word four, aye. Motion passes.
Do what? Motion adjourned.
Second. Okay. We're here now in adjourned at 8:06. 8:06.